Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 27, 2014 City of Muskegon City Commission Meeting. Before we begin proceedings, I'd like to ask Reverend Bill Freeman of Harbor Unitarian Universal Congregation to lead us in prayer, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Reverend?
Let us lift our spirits. Spirit of love, known by many names: God and Goddess, Yahweh and Allah, Dios and divine, nature and nothing. May we be grateful on this day after Memorial Day for freedom and democracy. May we be grateful for the men and women in uniform who have fought and are still fighting in the wars, the too many wars, that America has fought in, to protect and preserve our freedom and democracy. And may we be especially grateful for the men and women who have made the supreme sacrifice in protecting our freedom and democracy. And as always, we pray for the safe return of Jessica Herringa. Forever and ever, in the name of all that is holy, let it be, blessed be, so be it, and amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend. May we have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Here.
Commissioner German?
Here.
Commissioner Rizmasipiga?
Here.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Atsot.
Mayor Galvin?
Here.
Commissioner Hood?
Here.
Thank you. May we have the consent agenda?
Approval of minutes, City Clerk, summary request, to approve minutes of the May 12 Commissioned Work Session Meeting and the May 13 City Commission Meeting. Staff recommendation, approval of the minutes. 2014-2017 Water Treatment Chemical Bids, Public Works, summary request, recommend endorsement of lowest responsible bidder to supply chemicals to the water filtration plant. Staff recommendation, staff recommends the mayor and city commission endorse the low bids received and enter into a three-year contract with U.Salco and Key Chemical as the supplier of listed chemicals. Contract for mowing services, planning economic development, summary request, to approve a two-year contract with Sheldon Park Neighborhood Improvement Association for the maintenance of two city-owned lots in the Sheldon Park neighborhood. Staff recommendation, authorize execution of the contract. Responsibility for cleaning and mowing these lots would belong to the association rather than the city and would extend through 2015. The city's estimated cost of $1,000 to maintain the lots over this period would then be donated to the association. The neighborhood has maintained the lots for several years under similar agreements and has done a great job. Scott &amp; Joe World Dogs concession contract for City of Muskegon Parks, Public Works, summary request, staff is asking permission to enter into a one-year contractual agreement with Joe Ives of Scott &amp; Joe's World Dogs at Pier Marquette Park located within the City of Muskegon to sell hot dogs and other snacks and drinks from a mobile self-contained food trailer. Staff recommendation, authorize DPW staff to enter into concession agreement with Joe Ives of Scott &amp; Joe World's Dogs. Concession Agreement Contract for City of Muskegon Parks, Public Works, summary request, staff is asking permission to enter into a one-year contractual agreement with David Porter at Pier Marquette Park located within the City of Muskegon to sell various foods out of a vehicle on stationary tables and coolers. Staff recommendation, authorize DPW staff to enter into concession agreement with David Porter. Operations Management Contract Farmers Market Commercial Kitchen, Planning Economic Development, summary request, the new farmers market downtown includes a commercial kitchen. The intended use of the kitchen is for incubator space as well as classroom education. The ultimate goal is to have the kitchen used 24 hours a day, seven days a week. In order to market the facility as well as manage the usage, collect rent, et cetera, a kitchen manager is needed. Proposals were requested for this, and Pioneer Resources was the only proposal received. The city has negotiated with Pioneer Resources for their management services with a resulting contract. It is difficult to know exact costs and services needed at this point since it is new for all of us. Therefore, the contract term is only six months to start. It is anticipated that both the city and the manager will have a better understanding of operations and costs at the end of the six-month term. Meanwhile, we are confident that Pioneer is the best company to manage the kitchen as they have experience with food service and operations and management. Staff recommendation, to approve the contract and authorize the mayor and clerk's signature. 2014-2015 Michigan Municipal League Membership Dues, City Clerk, summary request, approve to pay the 2014-2015 MML dues in the amount of $9,495. This is an increase of $149. Staff recommendation, approval. Approval of Building Contract for 2355 Lincoln, Community Neighborhood Services, summary request, to award the building contract for the construction of a new home located at 2355 Lincoln to J.D. Fisher Builders in the amount of $138,270 with an additional $3,700 for bedroom-bathroom construction in the basement for the City of Muskegon's Home Buyer Program through CNS. CNS received five bids and the cost estimate from our spec writer was $142,300 base bid with an additional $7,200 for bedroom-bathroom construction and basement. Staff recommendation, to award J.D. Fisher Builders with a contract for the construction of 2355 Lincoln in the amount of $138,270 with additional $3,700 for the Community Neighborhood Services Department.
Thank you. Commissioners, you've heard the consent agenda as presented. Are there any items you wish to have removed for further discussion? Commissioner Turnquist?
Items D and E.
Commissioner Rizmasipiga?
I'd like to know more about Item B.
That was the water treatment?
Right, right.
Can I have a motion then? Vice Mayor?
I would move that we accept the consent agenda as read with the exceptions of Item B Baker, D Delta, E Epsilon, and F Fox.
I'll second.
It's been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner German, to accept the consent agenda as presented, minus Item B, D, E, and F. Any discussion? Not? Roll call, please.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizmasipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'll take these in the order they are on the list. Item B, Commissioner German?
Okay, I motion to, for the staff recommendation, the mayor and the city commissioners to endorse the low bid, receive, enter into a three-year contract with U.Salco, I believe that's how that is, as supply aluminum sulfate and key chemicals as the supplier of the hydro fluoride.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner German, seconded by the Vice Mayor, to receive and enter into a three-year contract with U.Salco and Key Chemicals for materials for the water treatment plant. Commissioner?
Okay, I'd just like to know more about this chemical that's going to be treated, I guess added, in that facility. Maybe Mr. Mohammed could shed some light on that. And when you talk about this fluoride, this chemical that's being added, are they going to just treat it or what?
What, is this revenge from the last time?
Oh, yeah, exactly.
That's what I get for opening my mouth the last time. But, good evening, everyone. These are chemicals that are used for the treatment of water. Obviously, the fluoride is the chemicals that is added to the treated water for fluoridations. That's the one. And I guess, I don't know how much detail do you want me to give you?
Well, I guess I want to know the level of fluoride that's added into the water. And just going back, looking at, you know, some research, the type of chemical fluoride, is this type of chemical actually needed in the water also? Because there's been some discrepancy when it comes to like fluoride, and they talk about how it is used in other products such as rat poison and all that kind of stuff. So, I'd like to know how far would that be in the water?
It's, I would ask that I be excused from elaborating on the amount that is applied because I'm not a chemical expert, and I would defer to the individuals about the application rates, if you will. As far as whether it's needed or not, I think the DEQ recommends it. I believe all of the communities in the West Michigan area recommend it. The dentistry industry recommends the fluoride because it helps in building and sustaining the well-being and health of the, then, I guess, teeth or tooth.
And from research also, Mr. Mohammed, there's been proven facts that fluoride doesn't actually help, you know, the situation with dental and stuff like that. So, this is my reason for asking, and I, you know, brought, wanted to bring to you to see if you knew the type of, what amount of fluoride would be added to the water and if it's really not needed, but you said it's recommended by the DEQ under state?
I believe so. And I believe every agency on the West Michigan area. As a matter of fact, I dare say every agency in the state of Michigan does apply the fluoride, the fluoridation process into the treated water.
Okay, thank you.
Would you like me to get you the information about the application?
Actually, that would be, that would be great. That would be great.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, sir.
Any other discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rizmasipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item D, Commissioner Turnquist?
I would move that we authorize the DPW staff to enter in concession agreement with Joe Ives of Scott &amp; Joe's World Dogs. Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Turnquist, seconded by Commissioner German, to authorize DPW staff to enter into concession agreement with Joe Ives of Scott &amp; Joe's World Dogs. Commissioner?
Thank you. My question is for, really covers both D and E, and I remember from last year, these concessions had to remain 150 feet away from the two established concessions that we had down there. In other words, they couldn't park in, on the deck, selling similar things that's there and the same kind of thing down on the arena, or the, down in the center of that.
All the...
I thought there was a distance that we had to have.
We, I think you guys, and I'm not, I believe it was 500 feet is what we have come to, what we have came to an agreement on, separation between the vendors.
But there was a distance.
Yes.
And that's still going to be in the fact?
That is part of the negotiation process unless it can be waived by either parties to attract more business, because as you can tell, if you go with 500 feet every single stall, we're probably going to end up in an area where it's least desirable, if you will, for those vendors. If you continue carrying that 500 feet for every vendor, as of right now, we have five plus those two, that's seven, so seven times 500 is almost 35. You're almost talking three quarters of a mile between them. So, somehow, the negotiation would have to enter. If they're not similar vendors, if you will, that we can maybe stagger them next to each other or less than the 500 feet. But it would have to be something that is acceptable and reasonable for both.
Both of these are selling food products.
Right. And we have, we've already approved, or you guys have already approved Bella Dog, for example.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we have to make sure that they're not impacted by the decisions that we make or agree, come to an agreement with the new vendors.
So, at this time, we don't have a footage that we're dealing with?
We make them...
And I agree with you, 500 feet probably is too much.
We made, I mean, from the get-go, so they're aware of what we're coming into the negotiations with. As a matter of fact, I talked to Scott right before the meeting, I said typically it's 500 feet. But we can go out in the field and make sure that it's acceptable to all parties, and hopefully you would allow us that deviation, not fixed 500 feet.
Like the vendors down there, it just, I don't think it's fair if they parked right in front of a concession stand that, you know, permanent.
I think at DPW, we had, what we have been discussing and mowing is maybe at some point we develop like an area, whether it's a parking lot or a concession stand area at some point that we would come before you and the city manager to, with a plan at some point, and allow you guys to act on it or address it, instead of this ongoing agreements.
Thank you. Anything else on this? Not? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizmasipiga?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item E, Commissioner Turnquist?
I would move that we authorize the DPW staff to enter in a concession agreement with David Porter. Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Turnquist, seconded by Commissioner Rizmasipiga, to authorize DPW staff to enter into concession agreement with David Porter. And...
The common, common question's already been asked and answered.
Is there anyone else? Not? Roll call, please.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizmasipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item F, Commissioner Rizmasipiga?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Operations Management Contract with the Farmers Market Commercial Kitchen to Pioneer Resources and authorize the mayor and clerk's signatures.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Rizmasipiga, seconded by the Vice Mayor, to approve the contract for the Farmers Market Commercial Kitchen with Pioneer Resources. Commissioner?
Yeah, I saw Rich from Pioneer was here, I thought he might elaborate on it. I think that Farmers Market had a very nice opening the other day, and people got to see where it's going to be, so it'd be nice if people understood better what we're trying to accomplish with this.
Sure, I dropped by, it was nice.
It was.
So, Rich? Rich? If you'd like to take the podium?
I will answer any questions.
Okay. If we could just get your name and address, and then, he's going to...
Grilla.
Yeah.
Okay.
Grilla.
Richard Thorstensen, 2483 Kimberly Drive, Muskegon, Michigan.
Thank you. Thank you.
I don't think everyone heard or knows exactly what's going to happen with the commercial kitchen and how it's going to be operated, so I thought maybe you could elaborate a bit about that.
I will try. I'll be speaking for a pretty large committee that's worked on it a long time, and I'm new to the mix, so. The idea for the kitchen is to make it a community resource. We'll open it up like a 60/40 split between the incubator use and the educational classes. The classes will try to raise the nutritional understanding and availability for everyone in our community. You know, for example, tomatoes are in season. People can buy their tomatoes at the farmers market, come over to a canning class, and leave with their canned tomatoes for their family. That's just an example to make it simple. The incubator part of it is going to be up to the creative entrepreneurs in our community and what they want to do with it. I've been to the Market Kitchen in Grand Rapids, which is fabulous. My executive director went, was at the one in Lansing. A friend of mine helped, helped start the one in Lansing, and we will be going up to the Hart Incubator Kitchen real soon. So, we're trying to pull from their successes and some lessons that they've learned, and we'll put that to our best use here in Muskegon.
And I don't have any further questions. I think Pioneer's done a great job with some events we've worked on, like Irish Fest and others, and they definitely know the kitchen management business, so I'm looking forward to it.
Very good. Commissioner Turnquist?
The area that attracted my attention is 24/7, which means it's never closed.
Correct.
These kitchens that you visited in these other places, Grand Rapids, Hart, and so forth, are they on that kind of a schedule?
Well, exactly. It depends on the food product, you know, that the entrepreneur is working on, but I'm sure you've seen the commercial time to make the donuts, you know? The bakers, they like to work from midnight to 6:00 a.m. to get it out to the public as fresh as possible. We envision caterers using it on the weekends. You know, a new caterer starting up may not have their own kitchen, so they'll, now they'll have access to one, they can start a new business. And again, it just depends on the mix of the need. That's why we've had a lot of fun trying to put together a kitchen that will be multifunctional and the equipment that's offered.
Very good. Sounds neat.
It's going to be wonderful.
Have you established pricing for use of the kitchen?
Pricing right now is a recommendation from the committee that is working on it, and it's based on what is currently in practice both in Grand Rapids and Hart, and we're trying, again, trying to learn from their successes and failures to make ours the best it can be.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anything else? Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Best of luck. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizmasipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Public hearings, please.
Request for the establishment of an industrial development district at 2306, 2320, and 2350 South Getty Street, planning economic development. Summary request, pursuant to Public Act 198 of 1974 as amended, Port City Architectural Signage has requested to establish an industrial development district at 2306, 2320, and 2350 South Getty Street. The company owns buildings at all three sites and will eventually be making improvements to real and personal property. The establishment of the district will allow the company to become eligible for industrial facility tax abatements. Staff recommendation, approval of the establishment of the industrial development district.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Francine.
Good evening. The company's located at 2350 South Getty Street. They've kind of been flying under the radar here for the past few years, building their business. We haven't been too familiar with them, but they're definitely growing and about to make some, some big investments. They recently purchased the, the properties at 2306 and 2320 South Getty that are adjacent, and they had them rezoned in the past couple of months to industrial use. So, the creation of the district is the first step in the process. After it is established, then they may start with the project, and then will have up to six months after the project commences to apply for the actual abatement. And we have Tim and Mort Mills here from the company, if you have any questions.
Very good. Vice Mayor?
If they'd be willing to give us just a brief overview of what their intentions are as we move forward with this.
Very good.
You came all this way, you might as well ask what you're doing.
Thanks, and we just need your name and address.
My name is Tim Mills. I'm the president of Port City Architectural Sign. We're located at 2350 South Getty Street. We currently occupy the two buildings to the north of us at the, at the address as shown in the agenda. Currently, we're looking for a tax abatements because we have been growing for the last several years rather out of control. We have a company that makes high-end golf course signage and amenities, but in the recent, last couple of years, we've started a company that makes decorative streetscapes products, and we sell our products all over the country, mainly LED lighting and decorative signposts and street signs. So, the buildings to the north, we're going to expand our operations, and they're critical that we have these properties because otherwise, we have outgrown our current location at the 2350. Expansion includes 60/100 square foot addition that's going to be put on by Hughes Builders. We've submitted plans to the city, and Hughes Builders is getting ready to start this project, so that's one of the things that we're looking for, a little bit help from you guys on. The operations that we're going to expand into on the other two properties are going to be adding probably three to four new jobs. We hired three employees last week alone, so we are growing, and I guess that's basically it.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. One, would the buildings that were recently purchased and rezoned, are they going to be coming down and expanding your current building, or are they going to be, just out of curiosity?
Right, we're going to put the addition on to the 2350 Getty Street building, but there are two buildings to the north of that, and they are not going to be connected at all. We're going to use them for storage, and we need one of the buildings for a cleaner process because our main process produces a lot of dirt and dust inside the facility. We need something that's completely clean, so we're going to keep one of those buildings completely separate for that type of operation.
Okay, all right. And my follow-up question, and the folks who've been here know how I am with street lighting, have you guys had any luck with Consumers at all convincing them that LED streetlights are not experimental, that they're tried and true technology, and they ought to let us implement them in this town?
Right, we've actually been talking to a couple of the key people at Consumers about allowing us to be specified in some of their LED developments. They're currently working on them right now, believe it or not.
We'd be happy to be a part of that.
They're writing specs right now, so apparently, we're going to find out what those specifications are once they have them written, but if you guys want to contact me, maybe somebody, there's a guy there that we know that we work with, that he's giving us information as they get it, too, so.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure we'd probably like that contact information.
You bet, I'll give it to you.
Thanks.
Anything else, commissioners? Okay, thank you.
All right.
Are there any members of the public who would like to speak to this issue? If not, we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing and approve the establishment of the industrial development district.
Thank you. I would move that we close the public hearing and approve the establishment of the industrial development district for the properties described. Second.
It has been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Hood?
Sure.
Okay. To close the public hearing, at least I heard you over there, and approve the establishment of the industrial development district. Any discussion? Not? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizmasipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Good luck, gentlemen. Hope you continue to be a part of the recent drop of the area unemployment to 6.9, the lowest rate since 2008. Thank you. Any other business commissioners? Not? Any comments or anyone from the audience wish to address the commission? If not?
If there's nothing else, I'd move to...
Oh, I'm sorry, did?
Yeah, um, Aaron, the rumor...
Well, we need to have you come up and give your name and address for public comment.
Bob Larson, 1550 West Seminole, Norton Shores. I'm a flea market seller, and rumors are running rampant again at the flea market that there was going to be discussion on a possible relocation of the market, which is why I'm here, and I didn't grab the minutes of the meeting on my way in, so I didn't know what the agenda was.
Oh, sure.
But, just in case, I came to see if I could gather some information and be able to apprise my fellow sellers of what our status is this year, and...
Sure, as far as this year, its status quo, we'll continue to maintain the flea market as is at Yuba. We're going through a process with staff evaluations at this time to see what the long-term will be, but at least for 2014, get it set up, sell your wares, have fun.
Okay.
And that, and we will continue to engage you as we ramp up the process for the evaluation, okay? We won't be left in the dark.
All right, thank you very much.
All right. Okay, good to see you, Mr. Larson.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I think it's safe to say is, we will have, we will have a flea market.
All right.
So, that, that's not even an issue. We will have a flea market and...
We have, going out, Muskegon will have a flea market, you know, going into the future and where or the other.
It's been my recent experience that there was one in the country out here on Sullivan Road, which has been completely abandoned by the sellers, and they've gone to a new location in Ravanna. And everyone seemed to be disgruntled that the person that ran the market didn't really seem to care a lot about the situation or promote it.
Right.
And the facilities weren't ever improved, and so, I just wanted to pass that little[1750.51] seem to care a lot about the situation or promote it.
Right.
And the facilities weren't ever improved and so, I just wanted to pass that little tidbit of information along that if something isn't cared for, then it can dwindle and die off.
Absolutely. No, we love you.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Is there anyone else? Matt, Commissioner Hood?
I move to adjourn.
It's been moved by Commissioner Hood, seconded by the Vice Mayor, to adjourn. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. Good night.
Good night. Good night. Thank you. 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 Good night. Thank you.